If I could have everybody's attention, please. We're going to go ahead and call to order our special meeting of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners. This is Thursday, July 17th, 2025. It is 6:19 PM following our meet and greet with the candidates. Based on the agenda that we have for this meeting, we are going to open with public comment. And before we bring it back to the DAAS, so at this time, I'll open the floor for public comment. If there's anybody from the public that wishes to address the commission on our county attorney issue, our current selection process, please come and state your name for the record.
Change in Teal Ude, I will state that I'm disappointed that Jim Mamprey is not being considered, however, hands down for Michael Rodriguez. He's got the experience. He's done litigation in court, and he is willing to look at the current lawsuits. And he said, yes, he's willing to meet and see if we could possibly get rid of those expensive outsourcing attorneys and see if he can get these, some of them nonsensical lawsuits wrapped up. He's young, he's full of energy. I wish that he would lower his salary requirements because Jim was only asking for $150. I know he has a family. I would love if he would consider relocating to Flagler County. I know you're not going to listen to anything I say, but out of the two choices, if it's those two, it has to be Michael. He's got the experience, he's got the energy, he's got the recommendations, he had the answers. The other applicant didn't give one example of a lawsuit or anything she was involved in. She gave a wrong, she didn't give her personal address. She gave a wrong address for her employment. She gave a wrong description of her employment. And she gave, she listed her monthly salary as $30,000 a year, which is probably what President Trump makes. And Michael Rodriguez is Michael A. Rodriguez. His resume was to the point. So I just wish he would accept a little bit less money and consider living in Flagler County. The only negative comment that I got, and I don't think that he really meant it as much as he said, I said, you're earning $153,000 now. Why are you demanding $195? Why couldn't you just? He says, well, I'm always looking to better my career. And I said, we need someone who is going to put their roots and stay in Flagler County and care about the citizens more than their career. And hopefully, he could possibly do that because he just seems like a very decent, talented person. And Mrs. Siegel Thayer, I think that it would be too much for her to even think about going to court. She's, I think, past her prime in being able to run around the way we need an attorney to take charge and not outsource anything anymore. Thank you. So go for Michael.
Thank you. Next public comment, please? Please? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the DAAS. All right, so our, what we have in front of us is two candidates for county attorney. So at this point, I need to hear from our, from our board on direction that they want to take. If there is a selection, then let's have discussion about your thoughts on the candidates that are here, or anything else that, that you want to bring up. We brought this here as a special meeting to either make a decision or to chart a future course. So-
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just want to provide a point of clarification. In terms of residency, a county attorney is not required to live in Flagler County. Only the county administrator, Mr. Haidi Petito, is the person that is required to live in the county. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so again, this is, this is our discussion time. So looking for, for a start of the discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that Mr. Michael Rodriguez packs all the gear. I think he's done everything we need to see done. He's got great experience. I liked his enthusiasm. I think he's the, that's, if we vote, that's who I'm going to vote for.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to thank both of these candidates today for coming here and meeting with us one-on-one. You're both very professional, extremely kind, and we welcome both of you for coming here. This is a tough decision because you're both talented, and thank you for your expertise, and your, your time is invaluable to us. So I wanted to thank you that. We're going to make a decision, I guess, today. If we do, I want to thank both of you for coming. If one of you are not here, please don't forget about us because I really think you've got a lot of things to offer us anytime. We appreciate your, your vision and your, your presence. So I'm just going to leave it with that.
Once we do make a decision, just for the sake of Ms. Jane's comment, salary and benefits and the contract will not be negotiated at this point. It'll be negotiated between the candidate and the, our HR department. So I would never make a decision based on a salary. A salary is posted, a salary is required in order to let the candidate know what we are paying. The nuts and bolts of that does not lie here at this DAAS when we make our motion. So I know you spoke a lot about money. That's not important to me. We have already declared in our budget where we're going to be with this position, and I would like the successful candidate to feel comfortable entering into a relationship with our board by negotiating what best works for that candidate. Again, I think we cleared up the issue of residency. I don't believe that, I hope that they fall in love with this place and want to be here for retirement or future, but we can't require that of them. And I would not make it part of the contract. But knowing that, I too believe that Mr. Rodriguez would be, would fit the requirements of our, of our, what we're looking for. I believe that Ms. Marcia is also a great candidate, but for my feel and my gut and the answers to my questions, I would also be prone to vote for Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments. Can we get some additional feedback, just so we can kind of see where everybody is standing at this point, whether we move forward or, or some additional, an alternate path?
Well, I'm not sure where we go if we don't complete what we're supposed to do today. Mr. Chairman, I move that we select Michael Rodriguez as our next county attorney.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson.
I'll second.
And a second by Commissioner Carney. Does not, we still have a lot of time here to discuss. I think what you were, what you were coming to Commissioner Hanson was just that, right, so all the options that we have is a, is selecting one, selecting none, but that puts us back in-
Right.
-a short timeline to where we would have to have an interim. You know, we've talked about that in the past. And, and then, so just so that everybody knows what the future would hold, we'd, we'd either still advertise, or we'd put it off on hold for a little while and then re-advertise later, I think, are some of the options if-
Well, I weighed that before making the motion.
Right.
But I think that we have a candidate, both candidates, as a matter of fact, were pretty qualified. But I thought he was super qualified.
Okay.
And he fit the bill, so pick him.
I'm not so sure that the question of whether or not we must have, we have two deputies that can share the job until this person comes on. I don't think there's a statutory requirement that we name a attorney. Mr. Hadid? Or have you answered that question already, and I just forgot the answer?
No, it's okay. It's entirely okay. You would need to designate who your chief legal officer is because that's the person that the clerk is going to rely on, state agencies. You know, when that person signs something, that person is representing that they are your chief legal officer.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ude, we'll have to keep background noise to minimum, please. Thank you. Again, if there's some other discussion, you know, I think, I think with the candidates here, let's, let's talk about their, their pros and cons and-
I think we already did.
And if we've got, or can coalesce around the motion that's on the floor.
Yes, I would say.
Pardon me?
She looked down and said-
I'm waiting to hear what other people are going to say. I told them both thank you, so I'm letting it to the next person.
So I found them both to be qualified and experienced. I really, I think this is tough. I really enjoyed thoroughly felt Ms. Siegel was wonderfully qualified, overqualified, maybe. But I, I'm comfortable voting today, and I'm also comfortable going to interview status again. It's, it's at the pleasure of the board. I, I'm not really, not sure, I don't know. It's a lot, you know, we're just getting off the interviews, and it's hard to make the decision right away for me, but I'm comfortable either way.
Commissioner Richardson?
I think I've said my piece. If we vote today, I'm prepared to vote. If we don't, I'm prepared to continue. I'd prefer not to kick the can. I, I think we had a very full, active day today of making a decision. I think we've got two great candidates, and of course, I'm looking at not anybody better or worse than the other. It's just a matter of choice and style, and what I think is best working for our board and our county. And that's really what my basis is on. I had a lovely conversation with both of them, and I really appreciated the time. Very, very well-resourced people. And at this point, like I said, I'm ready to make a decision. I don't think we need to go any further. We've, we've been talking about this for quite a while. So ever since we got Al's notice. And, you know, Al is great. Al's been wonderful for us. And, you know, it's a shame that it's time for us to make a change. So it's not a shame, it's just good time for making a change. So I think we could take the vote today on my opinion.
One of the comments I wanted to make was, I wanted to say, was in my interview process with each of them, and I wanted to say this because maybe everybody should fall behind me and, and agree to this. I mentioned to them that while Sean and Sarah will be a direct report to the county attorney, that Sean and Sarah mean a lot to the board and have been incredibly helpful to this board and staff and are, I find a critical portion, part, a component to the attorney's office. So while they would be a direct report to them, I wanted a level of assurance from whoever would be the county attorney that they, they understand, you know, that we, we greatly appreciate the work that Sarah and Sean provide. And should they ever find themselves in a, an area where they feel like they would be loving an incorrective action, that they come and speak with us individually or collaboratively in public at the board and talk to us about it first. That's how much our assistant attorneys mean to us.
I agree with that, too. Thank you. Commissioner Pennington?
With Mr. Hadid, is, is that overreaching into our arena? Com- Ms. Ude, please?
I think if you're asking the applicants to what degree they will collaborate with the existing staff, and if they find issues, that they would share them with you. I think that's appropriate to make that ask of those attorneys.
Okay.
Yeah.
In the motion or just as a statement?
I just wanted more of a statement, so that we knew that, that we weren't looking for an incredible overhaul of our legal, you know, department for sure. You know, that we greatly love our staff there. And I think people, maybe you got a sense of that today, that this Flagler County employees work like collaboratively, like a family. And it is very important to know, you know, if there's issues there at least before.
I will tell you from my own observations and conversations with the two candidates, I don't believe you have any trouble in that, in that area.
Okay. All right, so as, as chair, my luxury is, is the end. Want to thank Ms. Marcia. Thank you. Wonderful conversation. Feel like, like you said, could come anytime and just sit down and have a great conversation about any topic. So thoroughly enjoyed that short interti- interview time. And likewise with Mr. Rodriguez, we covered a lot of ground. Current legislations, the troubles with Senate Bill 180, all kinds of things that, that we need to be on top of. And I think it's, right, no, it's common knowledge that, that I started off with, with support for Mr. Moylan in this position. So I, I agree with the way that you've, you phrased that statement. But Mr. Moylan has withdrawn, so he's not part of this. And even as in moving forward, if it wasn't one of our candidates here, that doesn't change. He would not be a candidate moving forward. And, and so I've, I understand that. And, and I'm comfortable with the, with making a choice tonight because of the information that we've gained through this process. So with that, I think, you know, I think we've all had that opportunity through today and tonight's questionnaires. We, we have a motion and a second. I'll go out for public comment. If there's anybody that wishes to address this motion, can come to the DA, come to forward and state your name. The motion was to hire Mr. Rodriguez, correct, Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And seconded by Commissioner Carney. Yes, sir.
Wanted to beat Jane to the, to the microphone. Perry Metra, Perry Metra, 207 London Drive. Waiting will hurt the county in the long run. It's a decision that you should make so that you can get back to work. Like I say, losing, you know, this great man here is, is, I mean, for retirement, thank God, but it's, it's irreplaceable. And so you got to get going. And if you stall it again, kick the can down the road, as Commissioner Pam said, then we would be just waiting again. And it would be more pressure on all of you, more pressure on your county administrator, more pressure on the, on your attorney staff. You don't want to have them work harder just because no decision's made. Once you make a decision, then the guidance starts coming down the road, and then you really start making things happen. So it's all about what you all do to give them the direction, and you got to have someone in charge do the direction. So I'm not saying who to, who to vote for. What I'm saying is, it's, it's time to move on. Otherwise, you're going to have, you know, maybe less qualified individuals come to you, and you'll have another decision they have to make. That now you have to definitely kick the can down the road. And what are we going to be into next year? Don't do it. Get it done. Get the work done. You got a lot going on. You got too much on your plate. Big election season coming up. You don't have time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Change in Teal Ude, 3 Magnolia Drive North. Twenty-three-year resident and homeowner in Flagler County. I'd like to clarify and never insinuated that Mr. Rodriguez needs or should be a resident. I asked him if he was willing to come and live and if his kids go to school and live and breathe in Flagler County, if he would be willing to do that, and if he would be willing to negotiate his salary demand. I think he would be absolutely excellent as our county attorney, and I would hope that the commission would ask him, if you do vote for him, which I hope you do, that he review all the lawsuits. They're all in the clerk's file, right on the internet, and see which lawsuits he can go through, and I and other people can help him sort through a lot of the nonsense to see if we can get the remaining lawsuits settled and thrown out and dispose of outsourcing attorneys. He's litigated in court. I think it's inexcusable to just say, okay, well, he doesn't know. These cases are crazy. The Sears case is nonsensical. Suing the inspection company, it's going to trial. And the inspection company was told not to move the washing machines and go into the walls. So that's already been paid $74,000, and it should be dropped because Universal Sciences did exactly what the county told them. Don't do invasive inspections because the owner doesn't want to know, doesn't want her employees to know she's shutting down the shop. And then Al Hadid gives this to McKinnon, and we're still looking at the Old Dixie Hotel. The garbage is still there because the permit gives them six months. So it's 13 years, and he's already got 70, he's got, what did, what did he get so far? We got the legal fees back. Thank you, Sean. We got the legal fees. We don't have the property. We're 6,000 people looking at crap for 13 years. We've had a suicide there, drug deals, and now we have all this concrete, and they still have 140 days to pick it up because no one drafted an ordinance that says you have six months permit for debris. But once you start demolishing, you have to finish within 21 days, not day one and day 180. We're living in a pigpen. A good attorney could, could update the ordinance to protect the people. And that's what I'm hoping Mr. Rodriguez has the energy to do, and I, he will give me time as a citizen with my activism to sit down and let me share with him. I think will be a good choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, bring it back to the DAAS. Again, just final comments. I think, you know, we have, through this process, been able to have two really fine candidates, very well-experienced candidates, and diverse in, in their experience and background and to give us a really solid foundation to make a, a choice. I mean, this is a, not just any appointment. This is a strategic appointment that guides our, our legal course from this point forward. And thankfully, we've got a great foundation to start off and with our, our current team behind the scenes. Yes, Mr. Hanson?
I think we, it would be negligent if we didn't compliment Charlie on putting this-
Go right ahead. I'm sure he would like to hear that.
Charlie, something good, Charlie, something good.
Putting this whole thing together because it was an excellent job, I thought. Putting this whole thing together. Very well done.
Thank you, sir.
We're proud of you, Charlie. Thank you for that, really.
All right, so any final comments before we call the question? All right, the motion on the floor is from Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Carney for the appointment of Michael Rodriguez as county attorney. All those in, we'll do a roll call vote with the clerk, if the clerk doesn't mind. This is important enough for a roll call vote.
Anyone in particular want to start?
Mr. Hanson.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pennington.
Aye.
Commissioner Carney.
I vote yes to the motion.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Chair Danz?
Yes. So motion carries-
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Agreed. And I want to thank again Ms. Siegel for being here and being a part of this really special lady.
Yes, thank you so much for your spending the day with us.
We appreciate you. Thank you.
Any final comments?
She was a class act. I really enjoyed her.
Yes, absolutely.
I enjoyed the whole, the whole process was-
We do have one final public comment section, so if, if there's nobody that is tired of talking and still wants to have public comment. All right, seeing no one, I'll, I'll close public comment, bring it back. If there's any other, for this meeting, is there any other actions that we need to take?
I just have one quick question.
Absolutely.
When will our new attorney?
It's negotiating.
No, when is the date? When the start date is? Okay. I don't know that. That's why I'm asking. Okay.
Yeah.
That's all part of the negotiation. Okay. Well, I'll look forward to hearing what happens next. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a move we adjourn.
Hold on one second.
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I just wanted to thank you for being part of this process. It was a long process today. It took a lot of time of your time to analyze these questions and read these resumes. And also the candidates for being part of this process. It took them all day today to be with us. It was a long day. Also wanted to appreciate Charlie and his team because they did an outstanding job on posting these, getting all these packets together, and also saving the county about $50,000 to $60,000 in the process. So I just wanted to also thank Mr. Hadid for being an attorney for so many years, and thank you for allowing us to be part of this process with you.
Okay, thank you. And- And Mr. Rodriguez has a choice to make, so
Yes.
best, best of luck with that. And, okay, and so again, thank you all for being here, for being part of this process. Ms. Ued, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
That motion, Mr. Hanson?
Yes, move we adjourn.
Thank you. We're adjourned.